Good evening, welcome to tonight's meeting of the City of Tucson Planning Commission. My name is Anna Cassidy and I'm the Chair of the Planning Commission. The responsibilities of this body are to advise the Mayor and Council in the Planning and Development Services Department on the adoption of long-range plans, policies, specific plans, and regulations that affect land use and development. Will staff call the role, please?
Yes, Chair Cassidy.
Here.
Vice Chair Wellitt. Absent.
Present, I'm here.
Present. Commissioner Zajir, absent. Commissioner Martin.
Here.
Commissioner Packard, absent. Commissioner Young.
Here.
Commissioner Ortiz-Epinho. Absent. Commissioner Schwartz. Absent. Commissioner Wawake.
Here.
Commissioner Lane. Absent. Commissioner McCantsy. Absent. Commissioner Kenny.
Present.
Commissioner Lampeau.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, we'll move on to item number two, Approval of a Legal Action Report for August 16th, 2023. I entertain a motion for the approval of the legal action report.
So moved.
A second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor of approving the legal action report for August 16th, 2023, say aye.
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 Aye. Well, all those opposed, say nay. That passed unanimously. Would staff please provide their presentation for item number three, Smoke Shop Unified Development Code Amendment?
Very good, thank you so much. My name is Carver Sruev, I am a Principal Planner with PDSD and I will go through the slides on the proposed code amendment, UDC Code Amendment for Smoke Shops. Starting, bear with me a second, it's. Okay, so I want to start with a little bit of background on this proposed amendment and how we got to where we are. Initially, this came about due to direction from Mayor and Council, which occurred on February 7th of this year. At that point, they directed staff to develop a code amendment for smoke shops. This was requested due to concerns about the clustering of smoke shops and the impacts of smoke shops on public health, youth, and the larger community. Based on this instruction, staff researched potential regulations in other communities, including separation distances. And we developed a proposed smoke shop definition and land use standards to address this direction that we've received from Mayor and Council. This included a requirement that smoke shops be separated from one another and from other sensitive uses. And I'd like to note here that this code amendment would only apply to new uses. Existing legal smoke shop uses would become legally non-conforming or grandfathered. So in order to regulate smoke shops, we first needed to define what we were talking about. Smoke shops are currently addressed in the general retail use in the UDC, the Unified Development Code. So they're treated like any other type of retail use under the code currently. In order to address the unique impacts, we needed to develop and establish a separate land use class for smoke shops. So we developed a definition based on language that is currently contained within the tobacco retail establishment section of the Tucson Code. It's not exactly the same, but we did this for consistency to use similar language. So that allowed us to identify what a smoke shop is and then pull out from the texts, the business license records, where smoke shops are operational within the city. We could then go and conduct a geospatial analysis of existing smoke shops to see where they're located and how they relate to other smoke shops and parks. So based on that definition, we came up with the smoke shop means any establishment in which the sale or display or storage of tobacco products consists of 15% or more of the product display, sales, or storage in the space. Tobacco products was also defined. We took the definition verbatim from the Tucson Code for the purposes of this, just because we really want to ensure consistency and keep the implementation and administration of the code amendment as straightforward as possible. So moving on, once we developed these proposals, we conducted community outreach to give feedback on what we proposed. We conducted a community meeting on June 27th of 2023. We invited all smoke shop owners within the city and other interested parties. We contacted them via US mail and email where we had emails available. We ended up with approximately 50 participants at this meeting. We went through each scenario and discussed the pros and cons. Based on this feedback, a general consensus came up of a preference for 1,000-foot separation distance from, for smoke shops, from other smoke shops, and from schools. We also received comments about further regulation of smoke shops that were beyond the scope of zoning, for instance, doing background checks for smoke shop operators, things that really couldn't be addressed through a specific land use regulation. Staff has also been in ongoing coordination with business licenses, or excuse me, business services, relating to a zoning compliance letter requirement that could be implemented for new smoke shops so that we could ensure that as these are coming in, they are going through zoning approval prior to being able to open and operate. So then, after that, at last month's Planning Commission meeting on August 16th, Planning Commission held a study session and there was a lot of discussion about what had been proposed. Staff presented where we were at that point and numerous comments and questions came up. And these include the following, which I'm going to go through here. There were some questions about interior lighting of smoke shops that were shining out onto the road, potentially causing a hazard. Bright lights, flashing lights, strobe lights, whatever you might want to call it. So staff looked into that and determined that that's not something that the outdoor lighting code could address because the outdoor lighting code specifically relates to lighting in the exterior of buildings. However, it is something that could be addressed through the city's sign ordinance. However, there wasn't sort of a general over consensus on any of it because they're unique to each of the situations that may be occurring. So they would need to be addressed on a case-by-case basis. If the city receives a complaint, the city will go through and evaluate, according to the sign code, any of those for violation and follow the appropriate process for citation if one is found. There was also a request that further geospatial analysis be conducted, specifically bringing parks into the picture. So as I mentioned earlier, we looked at schools and we looked at other smoke shops. So staff conducted a geospatial analysis for parks as well, 500 feet from schools and other smoke shops and 500 feet from parks. And then 1,000 feet from schools and other smoke shops and 500 feet from parks. The updated analysis is provided, which I'll go into in a little bit more detail in subsequent slides. Staff's recommendation, and we'll get into this in more detail, still continues to be that we address solely the schools and the other smoke shops and the separation distance based on Mayor and Council direction. We also looked into childcare centers a bit more, and this was discussed at the study session. And again, staff is recommending that those not be included due to a strong, lack of a strong connection to tobacco use in childcare centers where children are much more closely supervised and many times often much younger. We also looked into some TPD crime data, and TPD may be available to speak on that as well. The format that we received didn't allow us to do a real deep dive at this point on causation between smoke shops and crime that's existing in the area, but I'm certain that there's still more information out there on that one. We also looked at, we received a question about tobacco marketing to children or adolescents and how much of that is actually occurring. In the Planning Commission Packet in Attachment H, we were able to get some more information, research that's been conducted by the CDC, the Food and Drug Administration, and others showing how tobacco vape products, those sorts of things, are being marketed to minors, specifically to adolescents. So that's available for review. There's also a question about concerns of prohibition and could there be legal exposure if we, you know, essentially quote, "go too far" in regulation? We feel that we're striking a balance here to address Mayor and Council concerns with regard to the location of smoke shops, while at the same time limiting exposure going forward. Of course, nothing is 100% or foolproof, but we do feel strongly that the proposal that we have put forward does that. There's also an ask for us to look into other jurisdictions that regulate to schools and other smoke shops. The ask was specifically to Arizona, but staff wasn't able to find any examples in Arizona. Doesn't mean they don't exist, but we just weren't able to locate those. But staff did find examples in Palo Alto, California, Bento County, Oregon, and Bishop, California, where all three of these jurisdictions, to varying degrees, had regulated to 500 to 1,000 feet for schools and other smoke shops as part of their zoning ordinances. These are noted in Attachment D of the Planning Commission Packet as well. There's also.
Are we able to?
Yes.
Are we able to speak on this? We have concerns and I'm sorry, but we have, I'm actually a property manager for several.
I'm sorry, so this is, this is the presentation, there will be a public hearing on this item, to which the Chair will, yes, thank you.
Okay.
So the final item that was addressed is the measuring process for separation distances for smoke shops. This is the exact same process that is codified for marijuana dispensaries, which, you know, is sort of a similar type of process, different, different standards, but it's a similar concept. And staff verified that staff is comfortable using that and we have effectively used that in the past to measure these separation distances. So based on the requests that we look at, parks, staff went forward and developed some additional analyses. We, of course, options one and three, which are shown here, we had previously mentioned, which are separation of 500 feet and 1,000 feet from schools and other smoke shops. We also developed the 500 foot from schools and smoke shops and parks and 1,000 feet slash 500 feet. And I'll get into what each of these look like here in the subsequent slides. Staff has also prepared some more detailed analysis that was sent out earlier today to the Planning Commission members that broke down what these figures are for each of the, the unique uses, sensitive uses, and gave figures on how many were in each of those. But anyway, this is what Planning Commission members saw last month, which is 500 feet from schools and parks. It shows that under this scenario, there would be 27 non-conforming smoke shops and approximately 84% of commercial properties within the city would be available for, for commercial development of smoke shops that are outside of these separation distances. So if we add parks to the picture, this is the map that, that shows what the areas of separation distances would, would then look like. We, we go from 27 to 34 non-conforming smoke shops under this scenario. And the available commercial parcels reduces from 84 to about 76%. So again, from 27 to 34 and then down from 84% to 76% by adding parks. Then if we move forward into the second scenario, the reanalysis that we did, we've got 1,000 feet from the schools and other smoke shops that was shown last month. We're looking at 54 non-conforming smoke shops and about 60% of commercial parcels would still be developable for smoke shops. So if we put parks in the mix, 500 feet, we go from 54 non-conforming smoke shops to 57 non-conforming smoke shops. So we pick up three more smoke shops that, that would be in these additional separation distances. And we're reduced from 60% down to 53.5% of commercial properties that would be developable, undevelopable under this revised scenario. So based on this, we, we still recommend continuing with what was presented, which is the last month, which was creating a new land use class for smoke shop in all commercial zones and mixed-use zones. So you're, you're not changing the zones where your existing retail uses are permitted, you're just creating a new class in those zones. You then, we would then recommend establishing the new specific standards for smoke shops as, as a specific retail trade use, following under that group in the UDC, requiring a separation distance of 1,000 feet from schools and other smoke shops. And then amending the Tucson Code to require a zoning compliance letter, as I mentioned earlier, just to ensure that when somebody comes in to get a permit for a smoke shop, they are also talking to zoning to ensure that these separation distances are met before any permit is issued. And then I will note that the full red line ordinance is included in your Planning Commission Packet, which is still available for review. So based on that, staff recommends the adoption of the smoke shop code amendments to the City of Tucson Mayor and Council. We're happy to answer any clarifying questions prior to moving into the public hearing. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, staff. I'll open this up now for any clarifying questions from the Commission for Staff related to the information that was just presented. Do we have any questions for staff? Commissioner Martin?
Chair Cassidy? I was just wondering if we have authority to do amendments to the Tucson Code? Just so I get the procedures. Section, it's kind of vague as far as our authority, but.
That, that's absolutely a very good point, Commissioner Martin. The Planning Commission does not have the authority to recommend those amendments. That was put forward more as an informational note that that would be required as part of this. So when the Planning Commission makes a recommendation here, it will only be on the UDC amendment portion of this. Mayor and Council will then consider both of these, likely under separate ordinance that are run through concurrently. But when you make your recommendation, it's specifically to the UDC amendment, understanding that that other piece is also out there.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I missed the last meeting. I wanted to commend the Commission and staff on great presentation and lively discussion. That was more questions and comments than I think I've heard in my time on the Commission, so that was really good. Couple things, I was wondering why industrial zones aren't included in, for smoke shops? Seems like that would be.
That's, that's a very good question, and that's something that we definitely considered and discussed internally as we're developing it. But the thought process is that smoke, industrial zones generally are vacant at night and on the weekends. You know, it's, it, they tend to be more of a workday period. And so we felt that if we pushed smoke shops into industrial zones, it might create an issue where they would be out of sight, out of mind, and there could potentially be more problems that would develop if that happened than if they went into the traditional commercial zones where they're currently allowed to be located.
Commissioner Martin, I also just wanted to mention that as is right now, it's allowed as a general retail use. And what we were trying to do is basically say that it's still allowed in those same areas. So we took where it's allowed in general retail, retail use, separated out that use and then applied those new use, specific standards to that new use. That's kind of why we ended up with commercial zones and not necessarily industrial zones as well.
Okay. I just wondered, you know, with the number of smoke shops that are becoming legal non-conforming, if there's any Proposition 2007 issues? And then, there's the first one in, not, are they not? Are they still legal non-conforming, but they were first and the other people are, came within 1,000 feet? I mean, is everybody legal non-conforming, no matter when they got there?
That's correct. They would be legal non-conforming as long as they are operating legally at the time of the adoption of the ordinance. But again, it goes into, as they would close down or lose their legal non-conforming status, that's how they would be weeded out. But it would, there wouldn't be a tier system where somebody was operating longer, so they would have more of a non-conforming status.
And I understand you can expand up to 100% under the legal non-conforming status?
So, yeah, so Commissioner Martin, what it is, is you can expand up to 50% with a zoning examiner special exception. So there is that ability to do so with a zoning examiner special exception, but they can continue to operate under that legally non-conforming use status.
I just, I kind of have a concern about the number of shops that are becoming legal, I mean, losing their rights currently, so that's my question, those are my questions, I do.
Vice Chair Wellitt?
Thanks, Chair Cassidy, and thanks Carver again for a really thorough presentation. I certainly appreciate it. Quick question for you, Carver, you had mentioned that somebody from TPD might be available to, to speak to, you know, just the impacts of smoke shops and, and crime. Is, is somebody from TPD available to kind of give a rundown as to, you know, what, what the challenges are?
Yeah, hi, Captain Peterson, Mickey Peterson with South Side Division. I, I can tell you, I guess I can speak to some of the issues we're dealing with on the south side. And the, and just generally the complaints we get from, from neighborhoods and stuff. We run heat maps, I sent those in that show kind of the, the crime areas where we see the, we see the most crime. When we look at Part One Crimes, which is homicide through arson, you'll, you'll see on the south side, we see some of that kind of forming up more heavily along the 12th Avenue Corridor, Campbell and Irvington. You can look at, we did one separately for narcotics violations. The, the issue is, although our officers run into more problems, it anecdotally, I guess, along smoke shops and stuff where we're stopping people and running into these issues. They sell paraphernalia, pipes. Methamphetamine is still very heavily used and a very popular product out there and pipes to smoke that are obtained at, at smoke shops. So we see congregations of people, we get a lot of movement, especially when, you know, they're open all night. But it, I don't think you can correlate it directly. I don't think it would be fair to correlate, correlate it directly to the smoke shops with just looking at heat maps because you look at 12th Avenue Corridor and we also have several areas where our unsheltered population is established within washes and tunnel systems along there. Now, is that because that's where the smoke shops are or are smoke shops there because that's where the customers are? You've got the Laos Transit Center at 12th, you know, right nearby 12th and Irvington. So that, that's a huge population center where we get a lot of traffic coming in and out. So it's, it's really hard to say that that's what's causing it on the 12th Avenue Corridor. Specifically, we had a lot of shootings and, and double homicide that were directly related to the smoke shops. We had a smoke shop that was you know, selling and dealing, doing other illicit activities out of it and, and coordinating with some dope houses in the neighborhood, so. Yeah, you have problems, but I, again, I think it would be unfair to say that I, I can attribute that to the smoke shops.
Great, Captain Peterson, I, I really appreciate you giving us that rundown and, and sending us those heat maps. It's, it's very helpful to, to see where, where this is happening. And I bring this up just to, you know, and maybe this is a follow-up question, and I think you maybe, maybe answered this already. But would you say generally, a lot of the, the activity that's occurring that's associated with these smoke shops, that I think you said that it was generally associated with those smoke shops that are 24 hours as opposed to, you know, maybe those that close, you know, at 10:00 PM or, or something like that?
A, a lot of the complaints that we get from the other business owners and, and the community are, are generated from that because it, it creates a lot of foot traffic going in and out through the neighborhoods and, and, and walking through and, and then that, you get people go and they, they'll visit a smoke shop and then they go to one of the other businesses and camp out on the front doorstep or. So that, that leads to complaints and, and then, you know, crime reports, things like that.
Okay, great, thank you again so much for, for being here to, to answer those questions there. Carver, Dan, can either of you weigh in as to how currently smoke shops, their hours of operations are regulated?
They are not currently regulated as a retail use through zoning. I would have to go back and double check to see if there's any regulation under the Tucson Code. Just to speak.
Yeah.
Really.
Yeah, Commissioner, Commissioner Wellitt, yeah, I, there are no regulations in the Unified Development Code for hours of operation for them.
Okay, thank you for, for clarifying that. I, I have enough for now, thank you.
Are there any other commissioners who have questions? Okay, I'm not seeing any hands going up, so we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Any members of the public who'd like to speak about this item for the Commission generally have about a three-minute time limit per speaker, which may be extended at the discretion of the Chair. Members of the Commission may ask questions of the Speaker, but we do ask that each Speaker be timely as we want to make sure that those who would like to be heard have an opportunity. I think we had maybe one person who requested to speak ahead of time, so we will have.
Yes, ma'am.
First, was that Ms. Bauer?
That's myself, my name, no, that was myself, Yasenia Tracy.
Okay.
Yes. I am a property manager here in Tucson. I manage several commercial businesses. And I am well familiar with Captain Peterson, which he's been amazing, but these smoke shops are causing a huge issue for landlords as well as business owners. I understand that it's advertised as tobacco use, but unfortunately there is a lot of paraphernalia that is sold in these smoke shops. And this is causing a huge issue to us. As landlords, I have tenants that are wanting to vacate because of the issues. So I, I just, I don't think 1,000 feet from smoke shops for schools or daycares is enough of a distance. And this is concerning to us because you see a lot of smoke shops. And if you just look, you can see the type of areas where they're, where they are located in. And primarily, those are going to be high crime areas.
Hey, thank you, Ms. Tracy. We'll go to Emily Bauer next.
Hi, can I ask for clarification on grandfathering the existing shops? Is that, that the ones that exist next to schools in retail settings will remain? There's not going to be anything changed for the ones that exist currently?
That is correct. They would be allowed to continue to operate. That is not something that the city has any control over because, through zoning, because it would constitute what is called a taking if you force them to shut down. So you're essentially taking the property rights from the smoke shop owners and it, it would not stand up to judicial scrutiny in court. So what this means is that future smoke shops, once the code amendment is, is passed, whatever it looks like, would have to comply with it. And I, I do understand that there are smoke shops that may be causing difficulty, but that is unfortunately with. difficulty, but that is unfortunately with zoning as a tool, that is the only way that zoning is uh able to function.
So then my input is basically moved because my children's school existed in a retail setting and the property management moved the smoke shop directly next door to my children's school. And now the fallout is exactly what, is it Yasmin? I don't know if you're still here.
Yes.
Property manager, uh, that, the fallout is now that people are camped out in front of the school, which is sharing a wall with a smoke shop and uh, I mean, I'm watching people smoke crack in front of my kids' private school, basically. Um, but I thought that I should be here because there was going to be some change for existing, but if there's not, then there's no. I mean, what kind of recourse do we have actually? None? Is that correct? Hello?
Staff, do you, do you have any response as far as how enforcement can be stepped up? Is, is there anything the city can do to help the existing problems?
Certainly, any issues that are, uh, where illegal activity are occurring are a TPD issue that are separate from the zoning issue of the location of the smoke shop.
The problem, the problem with this, the problem with this being is that it's not being addressed.
But I can't tell who's speaking right now, we need to go one at a time. So if, in order to keep the meeting orderly, if you can please raise your hand and then we'll go down the list of speakers in order in which hands are raised. So, right now we're on Emily Bauer, Ms. Bauer, did you have any further comments?
Uh, I guess not, I mean, the directors of the school have their hands up, Lucia and Tyler, um. I, I mean, I think it's I know that it's just zoning, but it's not right, what's happening is not okay. I think that's important to note.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Bauer, we appreciate you taking the time tonight. We'll go to Brian next.
Hi there, um, my name's Brian Hummel. I'm the Arizona and New Mexico Government Relations Director for the American Cancer Society, Cancer Action Network. And we do the advocacy work for the American Cancer Society. Uh, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak on the zoning ordinance. Um, I want to first give a a high compliment for your staff work, very professionally done presentation and the um communication that they've done. Um, I, uh, with that being said, um, I, I know this is out of the purview of zoning, but I would point out that the city did pass a zoning ordinance, the council passed in twenty nineteen. Um, an ordinance that uh raises the age for purchase of tobacco to twenty-one and instituted a tobacco retail license. However, they've never enforced it. Now, we're working with the city, Captain Peterson and others uh to, to make that happen, I'd encourage the folks that are on this call who are interested in getting enforcement done on a lot of the issues that have been brought up already, and I'm sure will be brought up more, um, to encourage the city council to actually enforce that ordinance. Now, to the uh issue that you are operating on here, uh in the purview of, of what's happening, um, the only um issue, uh, uh, great definitions, uh, which is really critically important to how this issue is regulated. Um, uh, we would um strongly encourage that you um adopt the park portion as well as an option to recommend to the city. Um, the, uh additionally, uh, the segregation of smoke shops in particular is concerning, typically what happens when you, um, in the tobacco regulation space. Uh, if you segregate a particular type of product or a particular type of retailer, uh, the problem tends to migrate to other uh retailers. So wh- what we like to do, what we encourage the model is to regulate all tobacco retailers equally, uh, but ultimately, um, this will lie with the city council to uh actually enforce the ordinance that they passed four years ago. And would strongly encourage everyone who is on this call or listening to it in the future uh to encourage the city council to do so. Thank you very much for allowing the time.
Thank you, Brian, next we have Lucia and Tyler.
Hi, uh, so Tyler, I am the director at uh the private school at the smoke shop next door to it. Um, and just what I would like to, to add to this is um, that we've, we've communicated very much with the smoke shop and tried to be very civil with them in regards to these issues that we've had, uh, and we're really met with uh a, kind of like a wall, uh, we're not able to really get through to them. Uh, the owner says he will, oh, of course, you know, try to help as much as he can, but uh when we have the school literally right next door, we were there first, um, and they came in after, but uh, we're right next door to them with our elementary classroom sharing a wall and they're smoking inside the shop, which I know is not allowed. Uh, you know, we go in there, we let them know they can't smoke and they claim they're not smoking and that it's incense, but it is smoking. Um, I just want to get some guidance as to what I can do, I have called the police, but they said there's nothing they can do that it's essentially our word against theirs. Uh, and I've talked to our uh property management and the landlord requesting uh changes in our uh lease, if there's nothing I can do there, and everyone says, we're sorry, but there's nothing you can do. I just want to see if there's any guidance I can get as to what my course of action can be to better ensure that they are actually following the law in regards to not smoking right outside the shop door as well as smoking inside the shop itself.
Staff, is there any response to that comment?
I, this Captain Peterson, uh, I, I guess if, if you have violations that are going on, um, depending on what part of, what town you're in, you can contact your division and make a report. Um, I would, I'll put in, in the, in the notes in here, my contact information. And just to make it easier, you can send me that information or give me a call. And I can add it to our inspection list, we are going out, we were out today with, uh, we go out with the FDA, Arizona Attorney General's Office, and, and we've been going out and doing um surprise inspections, undercover inspections, and uh that's something that we can add, we can add that location to the list. And I can also just have some officers go over and, and do some follow-up if it's a specific ongoing problem.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Thank you for that, next we'll go to Megan Bolter.
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name's Megan Bolter, I'm a public health law attorney with the Preventing Tobacco Addiction Foundation, also known as Tobacco Twenty-One. And I just wanted to build off the comments that had previously made, been made, I want to compliment the zoning commission for developing a very good policy in terms of density and proximity without, with the exception to um, the different categorization, this is a tobacco retailer, you do have an ordinance on the book that was adopted by the city council. And uh just to address the director and the parents' calls, that ordinance provides for multiple infractions that is a graduated penalty structure. And to what uh, Police Officer Peterson was talking, sorry, Chief Peterson was talking to, is that it includes um, uh, strong TRL includes enforcement procedures that would allow for any violations of a tobacco retail license. After a certain number of fines, that tobacco retail license can be revoked, which means they can no longer operate as a tobacco retailer in the city. So, conducting those compliance checks along with the city's ordinance would help to ensure that not only are they being compliant with the ordinance, but that they are not smoking indoors because even a violation of a Clean Indoor Air Act would count against their license as the ordinance is written. Uh, I also wanted to say that in terms of the daycare centers, and I think there's a misperception in terms of what those density and proximity provisions provide, is that it's not the age of the youth that are, that is the concern. It's that density and proximity to tobacco retailers, which include smoke shops, they're all in the same category, affect the social determinant of health that includes the environmental health, and it develops a social norm of what they're exposed to from infant and beyond. It's not that there's a fear of toddlers using, it's that youth exposure in terms of proximity to youth facilities, youth-oriented facilities, including schools, parks, churches, daycare centers, increases the likelihood or impacts, I should say, the likelihood of early onset of use and normalization of nicotine and tobacco use. So I just hope that you consider that as you move forward with this, is that there are provisions, they can be stronger, but that please make sure that that data indicates that this is about proximity to youth and access to youth. And if you are in compliant with the TRL as it exists, you can help alleviate some of these. So I, I encourage this, the zoning commission, to work with the city council in that where you're limited in terms of enforcement, they can step in. And again, please be part of the Tucson City Council ordinance consideration of enforcement policy within their TRL. Thank you so much for allowing me to contribute.
Thank you, Ms. Bolter, before we go to Hillary, I noticed Brian, you still have your hand up, if you don't have any more comments, if you can go ahead and put your hand down. Um, we'll go to Hillary next.
Um, good evening, I uh am from LPKNC, I'm the co-chair of our coalition. Um, I just wanted to first of all thank um the city of Tucson for the presentation and then just provide a couple of comments um on behalf of our coalition. Um, this is a really important issue to our coalition, we're focused on creating a drug-free community for youth on the South Side from ages eight uh to twenty-four. And um we do um believe that the smoke shops are associated with some of the concerns that we're attempting to address. Um, so not only is it an important issue to the adults at our coalition, it was also a big issue to our youth and some of our youth took it upon themselves to um work um with Captain Peterson and others in the community to look at these issues of the smoke shops and um trying to reduce their impact um both on themselves and on, on future youth that will be in that area. Um, we know that the South Side is an area where there's a higher concentration of smoke shops and um we know that that's an issue that impacts our, the youth that our um community serves and also our coalition. Um, we just wanted to reiterate that um we feel like parks should be included and the five hundred foot um rule should be included as opposed to the one thousand foot rule. And then I also wanted to build on, on Brian's comments regarding the twenty-one um age um to purchase out uh tobacco that was implemented uh or that was um enacted a few years ago, but has not yet been implemented. Um, and again, thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Case. Um, Ms. Tracy, I see your hand is back up again, I'll give you another minute.
Yes, hi ma'am, I just I, is this a decision, everything that we're saying basically is gonna help you guys decide today?
Yes, that's correct, we're taking all of the public input and that will influence our decision-making.
Okay, I someone made on one of the, the slides, it showed states like California and Oregon. Should I say more? I mean, look at what's going on in those states. Smoke shops are a huge problem and it's a huge concern because it's not just selling tobacco. It is creating, I mean, think about it, they're gonna need money, so it's creating the theft that's happening in the stores, it's creating the homelessness, the fentanyl use. Just by limiting the amount of smoke shops, that should cut crime. I just would like for you guys to really take that in consideration.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Tracy. Are there any other members of the public who'd like to speak? You can go ahead and put your hand up or if you can't figure out how to put your hand up on your computer, just go ahead and unmute yourself and speak up now and I'll listen for your voice. Okay, don't, oh, Ms. Bauer, did you want to speak for another minute?
Uh, yeah, if that's okay, just real quick, um, this is directed toward the chief of police. Um, the school is located uh on Twenty Second Street between Alvernon and Columbus. And there is a police station right there by the park, I think, am I correct? Is he still here?
Yes, yes, that would be the Midtown Station, and I, I tried to enter my contact info in the chat and it's saying chat is disabled.
Um, yeah, uh, I, I'm happy to forward that information over to, to both of them, thank you.
Okay, I will send that to you, I'll send you my email, phone number con- contact and then uh get, just get ahold of me um either tomorrow or next week and I will see what I can do to help you out with that school issue.
Yeah, or if you have info on who's doing your job midtown at that station, if you could put a good word in for us, I, there's a huge encampment behind the school, the CarMax lot that's there, there is like tons of people living in tents behind the CarMax lot that are sitting outside of the school in the morning when I get there and volunteer, that have been sitting there the whole night. Um, that we ask to leave if they're smoking, but I don't address anybody if they're not you know, if they're just sitting there, I'm not talking to them.
Okay, that's all out, out of the purview of the, this planning meeting, um, and they
I understand.
I will, I will make sure you get my info and you call me and that way we can, we can do this offline and we see what we do to get you taken care of.
Yep, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you both, are there any other members of the public who'd like to speak? Okay, seeing no hands go up and hearing no voices, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I just have one more, just one more thing. Um, if everyone in the, as member, the staff, if you guys can please just imagine a smoke shop in either the area that you live in or areas that you visit or areas that family members live in and see what type of issues this is bringing, please take that in consideration. I, I beg you guys to please think about that before you make a decision.
Okay, thank you very much, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I move to close the public hearing.
Thank you, Commissioner Martin, is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor of closing the public hearing?
Hi.
Hi.
Alright, any opposed? Okay, the public hearing is now closed, we'll open the meeting up to general discussion by the commission of the proposed code amendment.
Like to go ahead and, uh, go ahead and get started with some things to, to kick us off there. Um, again, thanks for everyone in the public who came out this evening to speak on behalf of this, thanks uh Captain Peterson as well for being here um and expressing, you know, all the information you have. Um, a couple of things come to mind, you know, when, when I think of smoke shops and the concerns that we've we've uh been addressed or hearing this evening and I think of other nefarious uses, if you will, that the city regulates, you know, we have bars, we have recs uh rest, uh not bars, but marijuana dispensaries, et cetera, and each one of those had, has added levels of regulations uh as far as use specific standards, et cetera, so um, I brought up the hours of operation because um we know that bars are regulated by, you know, the liquor license and the, and the boards uh be at that level and we know marijuana dispensaries are, are, are limited on their hours of operations. Two uses that often bring um these activities that, that have some, some unwantedness to them, if you will, for a lack of better term. Um, and so, you know, I, I look at the, these smoke shops and, you know, the, the concerns that uh Captain Peterson brought up and a lot of these are, are the after-hour activities and so I'd like to, you know, bring a, see what the commission's thoughts are and, you know, adding some, some use specific standards that would limit the hours of operation perhaps to That would limit the hours of operation perhaps to something similar to what, you know, marijuana dispensary is, which is uh, seven A M. to ten P M. Um, the other item I'd like, you know, maybe staff can can speak a little bit on and and help us understand uh, the uh. Tobacco retail licenses a little bit more and the the criteria of enforcement that's included within those license applications. Uh, in the time we were sitting here, I I simply did a Google search as to see what the the tobacco twenty one ordinance was. And and one of the things that came to my mind is that they're uh, required to be renewed every year. And so my questions are what enforcement occurs at that yearly mark to ensure that interior lighting, exterior lighting meets the outdoor code? And perhaps this is a way, if there are enforcement policies outlined in that ordinance already. That we might be able to integrate some of those as a a use specific standard to. To to help on the enforcement side, because that's what I'm hearing is is it's, you know, the zoning code can't help in, you know, T P D has it, you know, the ability to enforce. But how can we, as as the people allowing these uses to go in and we being the city. To to help with the enforcement side more regularly at the time of license renewal. Um, to ensure that some some of these challenges are are frequently visited, if you will. So um, that's that's my two cents on the matter. Thank you.
You. So Lexi, thank you for your feedback. I think there are two really important issues there. Number one is the hours of operation. Uh, the concern with taking an existing use and placing standards for hours of operation. On that is that the city would open itself up to two oh seven claims. The the argument could be made that by using zoning. There would be a partial taking that would occur because you are limiting someone's ability to operate their business. In a way that isn't currently limited. So that's why zoning is probably not the appropriate mechanism legally. For limiting hours of operation. Um, so that's, that's really probably part of the concern uh, similar with with enforcement issues.
Can I jump in real quick, Carter there? Um, just on on enforcement, I'm I'm not necessarily asking for us to to change hours of operation or rules for existing. But I'm looking at, you know, the similar instance of those that are coming in. Will be for, you know, as a new smoke shop, not those that are legally nonconforming or grandfathered. But those that are coming in are then going to be limited to that hour, set hour of operation through a use specific standard. Just as the the separation distances are being enforced.
Certainly, and and that's something that that we can certainly note in and look into.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion by the commission? Um, Commissioner Martin, go ahead.
I think I was looking at the maps and there's only difference of three smoke shops if you add the parks into the. Scenario, parks at five hundred feet. Is that correct?
That's correct.
I think it was fifty four to versus fifty seven.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. Well.
Any further discussion? Oh, sorry, go ahead, Commissioner.
I just wanted to make a motion if there's no other discussion.
Sure, I'm not seeing any other discussions, so go ahead and I'll accept a motion.
Um, the. Motion is to recommend. Approval of the staff. Changes the U D C um. Amendment for the smoke shops. But I'd like to add the five hundred foot separation to parks. Into the code. That's it.
May I make a friendly amendment to your?
Yes, you may.
Um, I would like to take Commissioner Martin's recommendation of uh, including the five hundred foot um, separation requirement from parks. As well as uh, adding a use specific standard that regulates hours of operation for any new. This uh, not dispensary, excuse me, uh, smoke shop coming in. And those hours uh, be uh, seven A M. to ten P M.
I'll accept that friendly amendment because food courts are gonna be required to meet those standard hours too, so under the current draft.
Okay, we have a motion on the table. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion in the second. All those in favor of recommendation um, with. The motion as presented by Commissioner Martin with the friendly amendment by Vice Chair Wellitt, go ahead and say aye.
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 Any, any opposed, say nay. Okay, that passed unanimously. We'll move on to item number four. Would staff please provide a presentation for item number four, food truck court U D C amendment?
Certainly, thank you. Bear with me one second. We are. Shifting gears now to discussion of a. Planning Commission study session on a proposed U D C amendment for food truck courts. And similar to. Smoke shops, uh, this code amendment started from Mayor's Council direction. This occurred uh, at the January eleventh, twenty twenty three meeting where Mayor and Council authorized staff to develop standards for the congregation of food trucks. On approved sites. Uh, this came out because of the uh, we'll get into that in a little more detail. But uh, to get started on this, staff reviewed examples from other cities, communities and held several meetings and developed. Your draft standards to address the issue, which will be discussed tonight. Uh, we proposed code change developed um, to balance health and safety. Uh, concerns while permitting congregate use of food trucks. Uh, I want to be specific here on something because this question has come up in the past with uh, some of our outreach. That this proposed code amendment uh, does not include any changes to existing peddler or mobile food truck regulations. This is simply addressing standards where you would have congregation of food trucks on a single site. So digging into this, why are we doing this? Uh, so some of you may be familiar with some of the media coverage that has come up for the pit, which is a food truck court. That currently is uh, existing at uh, Twenty Second and Pantano near the loop. Um, so there's been some coverage with that. Um, and we've seen that uh, this is really an example of changes that are occurring. To how food trucks congregate and how they they operate. Um, with this, this type of use, we're seeing concerns about health and safety. Uh, including ensuring that adequate electrical is available to these sites. Parking, restrooms, uh, seating areas for dining, grease traps, all all those sorts of things. So we're looking at ways to establish minimum standards for these congregant uses. While also recognizing that there's a strong interest in the community to support small businesses, small business incubators, which oftentimes food trucks are. Um, and currently the way that the U D C is structured, there's really no way to regulate or even permit these types of congregant uses. So this, this development is really intended to address a new use that is emerging. And do it in a way that permits really the best of the use while establishing minimum standards for health and safety as well. So again, when we were developing this, this proposed code amendment, we've looked at what was going on elsewhere. We looked at food truck courts that exist in Portland, Oregon, Durango, Colorado. We looked at Comida Park, which is down at the Tenca Verde Swap Meet, which is in Pima County, not city of Tucson. But we we're able to see an example of something similar that that is currently going in right in our backyard. And then also looked at numerous jurisdictions that are identified in planning research documents. The American Planning Association Planning Advisory Service had had a really good report on this specific use. And what other jurisdictions have done or are doing to to address it. So after we began to look at that, we conducted a a robust public outreach process. Uh, we held multiple engagement events. Uh, first of all, we held two community engagement meetings. These were held virtually. One in the morning, one in the evening to ensure that we got as broad of a spectrum as people as possible to participate on the, in them based on their work schedules. We did a broad mailing to licensed food truck operators within the city, notifying them of the meeting and inviting them to participate. We also worked with our public information officer to do a robust uh, social media outreach on this to get as many people in as we could to hear what they had to say. Uh, we had approximately sixty five participants across the two separate meetings who provided great input to us. On how, you know, anyone from community members to food truck operators to restaurateurs, it was really a broad spectrum of people. Uh, we also met with the Tucson Metro Chamber Restaurant Advisory Council. And with some specific food truck operators, just to get their feedback on what we were proposing here. Uh, so we received a lot of comments and this slide really is just providing an overview. Uh, of some of the types of comments that we received specifically. Um, there were, you know. Comments about potential financial implications for food truck operators. Uh, concerns that congregating them would add additional costs to operate in that congregate setting. Because of the cost of the infrastructure that would be required under the, under this code amendment. Uh, again, concerns that that wouldn't align with the cost effective nature of food truck operations where, you know, it's it's. Not the the food truck operations currently as the peddler licenses. Just allow you to operate as a um, self-contained unit versus having the infrastructure installed. But again, we're not changing those peddler license, this would licenses, this would just be an additional way for food trucks to operate as a congregate use. Um. There was, you know, some discussion about wanting to see consistency with existing requirements for restaurant related to health and safety. Uh, as as feasible. Um, there was some really good feedback on uh, generators and the need for stable power for food trucks. Um, you know, talk about internal combustion generators with concerns about noise and fumes versus the newer inverter generators, which which don't have those negative, negative side effects. But in some instances, give food truck operators the ability to have much more stable power so that they can keep their food chilled. And uh, continue to operate without frequent resetting those sorts of things. Um, there is also discussion about having a commissary on site or essentially a commercial kitchen and onsite. And being able to permit that to make it easier for the food trucks to operate by having that kitchen facility. And then they could sell out of the specific trucks. Um, there is also some discussion at the meeting about concerns about liquor sales or liquor licenses. And, you know, making sure that there is adequate parking so that you wouldn't see on one of these congregate sites. Parking overflowing into the neighborhood and having impacts on the community. So again, what we needed to do to start in order to figure out what would we would be regulating is defining what a food truck court or food court is. For the purposes of the red line ordinance, we talk about it as a food court. So I want to clarify that when I say food truck court, for this purpose, I'm also talking about a food court, even though it it's it's semantics at this point. But that's, that's what we're talking about here. And what we define a food court is as a unified establishment, so the unified establishment piece is key here. Which serves food for consumption on or off premises for multiple eateries or vendors. Uh, these food courts may be developed to include a combination of indoor. Or outdoor operations, so fairly broad in that sense. So based on that definition and based on talking to people in the community and looking at what other communities have done. We developed the proposed food court U D C amendment. And an overview of it is that, first of all, we created this new land use class again of food court. That would go into all commercials, breed de- permitted in all commercial zones under the U D C. Um, couple of the use specific standards are that outdoor activities would be allowed. But loudspeakers or music are prohibited within six hundred feet of residentially zoned property. Uh, retail sales would also be permitted, but couldn't exceed fifty percent of the vendor stalls. Within a food court or food truck court. Uh, also, there's a requirement that there be permanent pow- power pedestals installed in a central grease interceptor. Again, the idea here is to provide the necessary infrastructure for these food trucks or vendors to continue to operate regularly on these sites. Uh, we would also, based on feedback we received, allow commercial kitchens or commissaries on the sites. That would be allowed to serve the vendors on the approved food court. Uh, we would also prohibit the use of outdoor internal combustion generators on the site. Hours of operation be limited from seven A M. to ten P M. Uh, temporary or permanent restrooms. Uh, accessible restrooms would be required on the sites. And parking would be one to one hundred square feet for designated outdoor seating, which is consistent with restaurants. As well as one parking space per vendor. Uh, in addition to that, we would have some standards relating to the uh, sort of surface infrastructure for the site. Um, a dustproof surface could be permitted as an exception to the standard requirement. Uh, we've intentionally left this somewhat open, but given examples of pavers, concrete porous, concrete, porous asphalt, decomposed granite. Uh, granite that's treated with a polymer motion, molson to control dust. Um, chip seal, if organic or inorganic ground cover. The idea here is that we're looking at the performance of the surface to make sure that it's dustproof because that is a, obviously a health. And safety issue when you're dealing with the preparation of food. But we want to give some flexibility to allow specific court operators to figure out what would work best for their site. Additionally, we looked at additional landscaping as not being required if there is an existing developed site. So the the thought process here is if you have a large parking lot that's underutilized, let's say it's for a big box retailer. And you want to go in and put some of the infrastructure in for a food court and operate there. We're not going to require that the site receive an additional landscaping because it's already been developed. Um, also, if permanent paving is not provided, again, with the flexibility on some of the dustproof surfaces. Uh, then landscaping and stormwater retention and detention standards would not apply. So based on that, uh, we respectfully asked that the planning commission uh, set a food truck court. Code amendment for public hearing coming up at the next meeting, which is on October eighteenth, twenty twenty three. Thank you.
Thank you, staff. I'll start out with a couple of questions. What is the purpose of the fifty percent limit on retail uses?
The the intent here is that we don't want to see this turn into something that is not a food truck court. You know, it it could turn, if if we didn't limit the the retail uses, you would be moving from. A food truck use to sort of a craft bazaar or something like that. And we just wanted to establish some standards so that. You know, a. Use A didn't go in and then over time it evolved into use B when that wasn't what was initially approved.
Okay, and my second question is, what would the development review process be for one of these food courts?
It would be the same as any other development review process where it's a permitted use within um, within the specific zone. They would need to submit a development plan and they would need to go for through the traditional review approval and permitting process. and permitting process.
Okay, that was all of my questions. I see Commissioner Lambo has his hand up.
Hi, thanks. Uh and and uh thanks for the presentation. Good job. So I I was just, I just have a few questions and a few suggestions. Uh the one question that came to mind other than the fifty percent uh retail was, um is there a limit to the number of stalls that would be allowed uh per acre or anything that you considered in that area?
At this time, we haven't limited density to the the number of stalls as long as the other performance standards could be met, specifically parking, outdoor seating, facilities. That's something certainly that if if like to suggest, we can go back and take a look at. But right now, it's it's fairly um it's fairly open in that as long as all other standards are being met, keeping in mind it's a commercial use, it would have to meet setback and and everything else.
Sure. And then so the other uh comment I have is just related to, so it's um four point nine point four uh M, and it it looks like the numbers skipped from one to six, but it's uh four point nine point four M, seven. Uh B and C look like they're combined. Uh so I think that should be one. Uh but then the uh suggestion they have is for what is currently E uh related to the parking. It's it's a little confusing, the the wording there. I think you should mention that something along the lines of the parking must be adequate to meet the requirements for all uses on site uh per UDC section seven point four point four. Um it it's it's just a little confusing. Uh just just some clarification there would be good.
Thank you.
Is there any more discussion? That Commissioner Lambo is that you still speaking?
Yeah, I was just going to say that's that's all I had.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Lambo. Any other commissioner discussion?
Oh, I have my hand there.
Go ahead.
Thank you, uh Chad Cassidy. Um I was looking at the definition of food court on the second last page. Um I think there's like tea and coffee trucks, you know, and it it just says food. Um it doesn't say beverages, so I don't know if that needs to be in included or, you know, I know there's the beverages with the alcoholic beverages, so I don't know if it's non-alcoholic beverages needs to be added, but I think there are trucks that don't serve food or serve more beverages and food, so. And then towards the end, it says it says multiple eateries, and is that more than one? Is multiple or?
That is correct. That would be two or more eateries.
Cause I know like a Campbell and Fort Lowell, they kinda get some trucks together there temporarily. Would that apply to them too, or is that?
Very good question. And of that, this would not apply to the kind of um you know, coming together food truck rallies where there's no infrastructure or it's not a regular use that's or a permanent use that's occurring. Uh this would specifically apply to those sites where, again, maybe it's under common ownership and somebody is leasing the site to food truck op- operators and and they are essentially there um regularly or all the time.
Okay, um under four nine thirteen O and P. I think number two says that all the uses have to be in an enclosed building. When four nineteen uh um I think, well, I don't have the code. One of them says that they can be indoors or outdoors in combination, so seem like P point two needs to be excluded because it's.
I will take a look at that. Yeah, there's it's not the intention to require all the uses to be in an enclosed building. It is to permit interior or exterior.
It says if modified by special standards, but it seems like it's just
Yeah.
in conflict.
Certainly.
Um under six E, it says the outdoor lighting code and outdoor lighting standards. Is that the standards in the lighting code, or is that a different, is that building code standards or?
Those are the standards in the lighting code.
Okay. Um under uh seven F. It uh it says if I'm within an undeveloped or perm- and permanent payment is not provided, so it seems like well, it seems like if you're gonna do this, you have to have a developed site, but so I'm a little confused by that section. But and then it seemed like G and should be separated into two. One is hours of operation and one is the use of outdoor generators, just for clarity, since they seem to be different standards, so. Um I think that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion by commissioners? I see there's a hand up. I do not believe Joe Zarelli is a commissioner. This is just a study session today. So if you're a member of the public, this is not a public hearing. There will be a public hearing on this before a recommendation is made. If you have a question or a concern, forward those to staff, and they'll make sure that we get any input that you provide. Commissioner Lambo, you have your hand up again?
I would just like to echo uh Commissioner Martin's comments related to seven F. And I think it goes back to, you know, limiting the number of stalls on a site. Um I can see there being issues with it being totally undeveloped, and what if there, you know, twenty or thirty food trucks on the site? It seems like if there's a lot of traffic going to it, there's a reason for people to go, you know. Uh and a lot of traffic, a lot of cars, parking, uh it it I'm also sort of confused by by seven F. So I just wanted to say, wanted to say that.
Get closer, look. Thank you.
Commissioner Martin, did you have your hand up again?
Uh yes, I I think if there's somebody that wants to speak, they can speak or call the audience. I think that's correct, isn't it, Daniel? There's they're not, they're allowed to speak on any issue on the agenda.
Um Commissioner Martin, yes. So um the rules are that uh any item that is not a public hearing um or something that's not an item, uh they are able to speak at the call the audience.
Hey, thank you. I I learned that when I was chair, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Martin. I appreciate the education. So um the member of the public who wanted to speak, we do have a call to the audience towards the end of the agenda, so if you just hang tight, we'll get to that. Any other, oh, Vice Chair Wellitt, go ahead.
Uh Chair Cassidy, I'll go ahead and make a motion to set the food truck court code amendments for public hearing on October eighteen, twenty twenty-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 All of us. Any opposed? Say nay. A motion passes. We will set the Planning Commission public hearing on the proposed amendment for October eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. Item number five, would staff please provide any PDSD updates to the commission?
Good evening, commission. Just a couple of updates from PDSD. Um first, we wanted to let you know that we have moved to phase two of outreach for um Plan Tucson, our general plan update. Um and this means that we have kicked off our topic-based working groups. We have working groups on five topics, land use, transportation, climate, um community resources, and economic development. Um so I know that the commission did appoint a liaison to the land use working group as that is the um most relevant to the planning commission. Um I actually, I think you pointed, you appointed two of your members as liaisons, and neither are here tonight, so we will follow up um with Commissioner McCounsey and Commissioner Lane and make sure they're aware and looked in, but I wanted everyone to be aware of those. Um while those are the two liaisons that you um that volunteered or you selected, um other members of the commission are welcome to attend those working group meetings on topics um that may be of interest to your work on the commission or otherwise. Um so if you're interested, you can email any of us on staff um for more information or email plan tucson@tussonaz.gov. Um the other quick announcement I wanted to make is just to let you know that we are currently holding a casita design competition um to get um innovative ideas for uh casitas or EDUs. This is a code amendment that went to Planning Commission about two years ago. Um and since then, we've seen a lot of interest in accessory dwelling units or casitas in Tucson, so this is something we're doing to try to make casitas more accessible and affordable to community members. Um the design competition will select up to ten designs that will then be featured in a model plan library um to make it easier for community members to find plans, connect with designers, and get their casitas permitted. So that's um currently open, and the deadline for submissions is September eighteen. I see a hand up.
Corin, it's me. Uh thanks again for for your presentation there, and I just wanted to commend staff on all your guys' great work. This last week, uh there was the Arizona State Planning Conference up in Ledgefield Park and the the city of Tucson. You know, I hate to say this, but I think we all know as as professional planners here that it's not always given the 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 most kudos, and so it was really nice for a change to hear the city getting lots of kudos as far as the policies that you guys are are changing as it relates to housing and and addressing housing needs. So I wanted to give you guys kudos for that at this time while you brought that up.
Thank you, Vice Chair Wellitt. That's great to hear. Um and um great to hear that report from the state conference. Um so those were our announcements. Um the last thing I do wanna say is that we are starting to explore options for hybrid meetings. Um so we don't have anything definitive yet, but I wanted to put that on your radar, cause Dan may be pulling the group um shortly on um our your capability to go back to in-person um or hybrid. We would still like to keep a virtual option for members of the public. So that's what we're kind of working out as some of the technology needs. Um and we're considering potentially doing in-person with hybrid options for particularly for meetings that do involve a public hearing, like tonight's meeting, and potentially keeping a virtual only option for meetings that are only study session items. So again, we're still exploring some of the options, um but more soon on that. That's it for our updates.
Thank you. We'll move on to agenda item number six, future agenda items.
Great, thank you. Um and yes, in addition to uh yes, pulling you for and getting your feedback on the um the the virtual versus kind of hybrid in-person model, um we do have a couple items uh coming up. One is the public hearing that we just set uh for October sixteenth. That is the public hearing for the food cut uh food court UDC amendment. Um and then we will also have a study session for the RINCON Southeast Subregional Plan. Um I believe on that agenda, it actually says public hearing, but that will be a study session um at the October sixteenth meeting, and Hank likes to say hi. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Agenda item number seven is the call to the audience. At this time, I'd like to offer the public an opportunity to speak on any subject that's not listed on the current agenda as a public hearing. If anyone would like to speak, please raise your hand or speak to let us know. Uh Joe Zarelli, I know you had your hand up a little earlier in our meeting. If you wanted to speak, this is your opportunity to do so.
No, I was just wondering why I like uh like if you're gonna have a food truck park or whatever, like why the structure wouldn't have to have a a grease trap when all the food trucks have to have a commissary, which is required for that. That was my only thing.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. And and we are adjourned. Thank you very much, staff.
Thank you.
Everyone have a great night.
Good night.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.